What's the name of that room? Founder's room. To talk about the two issues.
Madam Clerk, you ready? We'll now call the regular meeting for the Garden Grove Housing Authority. Madam Clerk, could you please take role?
Commissioner Dalton?
Here.
Commissioner Doe?
Here.
Commissioner Jones? Commissioner Navarez?
Here.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Here.
Vice Chair Broadwater?
Here.
Chair Nguyen?
Here. Do we have any oral communications for the Housing Authority? Hearing none, we'll move to the consent items. Consent item?
Madam Chair, it's recommended that Items 2A and 2B be acted on simultaneously.
Do you have a motion?
Move the item.
Second.
Call for vote.
Motion received, six yes votes with Member Jones being absent.
Should we be waiting for Member Jones?
No, we're done. I mean, you're pretty much done, go ahead.
Okay. We have public hearings. Item 3A.
Madam Chair, Item 3A is a public hearing to consider the five-year plan and the annual plan for fiscal year 2010-11, and I'd like to introduce Danny Nguyen as our new Housing Authority Manager, replacing Marianne Homer-Mara, and Danny will give the staff report.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. The item before you tonight is the Garden Grove Housing Authority Five-Year Annual Plan. The Department of Housing and Urban Development requires housing authorities to complete a five-year annual plan, which outlines the agency's goals and accomplishments. In the past five years, the Garden Grove Housing Authority maintained 100 percent lease-up in order to maximize funding received. Staff received training on customer service skills, on inspection and eligibility requirements. Supervisory staff received training on executive management of the program and underwent testing. The Housing Authority participated in outreach activities involving the Vietnamese and Hispanic population. Bilingual staff went out to community groups to explain and promote the Housing Choice Voucher Program. Eligibility interviews, briefing sessions, and inspections are conducted in English, Vietnamese, and Spanish, so that tenants are able to access the program fully. The Garden Grove Housing Authority will take steps to maintain our high-performing rating. We will continue our goals of providing excellent customer service, by continuous assessment of policies and procedures to ensure we are effectively serving our community. Additionally, we will continue to administer the Family Self-Sufficiency Program to encourage participants to our career development and self-reliance. The Housing Authority plan was made available to the public and the Resident Advisory Committee for their comments. The public hearing was properly noticed on January 7th until 14th. Staff recommends that the Commission conduct the public hearing and approve the five-year annual plan and authorize submission to HIDE. That concludes my report, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Any comments from the public? I'm opening up the matter for a public hearing. Any comments from the public? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move to receive and file. Second.
Call for a vote.
If you can amend the motion to actually adopt the annual report, the five-year plan and the annual report. Move to adopt.
Second. Call for a vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
We have no items for consideration. Any matters from Commissioners and Directors? Hearing none, I will now call for the adjournment of the Housing Authority. Our next regular meeting of the Housing Authority will be held on Tuesday, April 27, 2010, at 6:30 PM in the Council chambers.
I'd like to call a Garden Grove City Council meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call a roll?
Councilmember Broadwater?
Here.
Councilmember Doe?
Here.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Here.
Mayor Protem Jones?
Here.
Mayor Dalton?
Here. We'll have the invocation by Keith Jones, Public Works Director, and the pledge of allegiance by Councilwoman Nguyen. I see we have some presentations.
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor, and I'd like Keith Jones to make the presentation this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Fertal. This evening, the Garden Grove City Council is pleased to acknowledge nine outstanding students selected as ambassadors representing the city of Garden Grove in the 20th Annual Sister-City Exchange Program to Pyongyang, South Korea. For over 20 years, Garden Grove Sister-City Association has deepened Garden Grove's appreciation and ties to Pyongyang, Republic of Korea. Through the Sister-City Exchange Program, Garden Grove youth have the special opportunity of experiencing Korean culture firsthand. They take in the country's beautiful sights and tastes, but more importantly, the hospitality. Korean families, who open their homes and hearts to their special guests, graciously host the students. Thanks to the generosity of the Garden Grove Community Foundation, Rotary Club of Garden Grove, and Kiwanis Club of Greater Garden Grove, as well as diligent fundraising efforts throughout the year, the Sister-City Association raises funds, enabling the youth to travel on partial scholarships. The students, along with chaperones Joseph Pack and Cam Mangles, will serve as Garden Grove's goodwill ambassadors. They will be leaving on April 8th and returning on April 17th. I'd now like to ask each student to come forward as I read their name and a short bio. We'll start with Okari Calderon. Okari has been part of the Garden Grove High School Water Polo Team for three years and Swim Team for two. Her hobbies include dancing, shopping, and baking. She's the oldest of three children and wants to become a lawyer, so she can give back to her community any way she can. Next is Nathan Karanza. This active and busy Garden Grove High School senior is a musician and athlete. If he's not playing the saxophone for the school's jazz band or helping his dad, he can be found weightlifting or with his basketball or swim team. He loves history, competes in academic decatholons, and hopes to become a mechanical engineer. Theodore Flatabo is our next ambassador. Next year, Ted hopes to complete his senior year in Germany, which is what his older brother is doing this year. Until then, Ted will stay busy as a Boy Scout, captain of the soccer team at Pacifica, and volunteering. He's a newly licensed driver, as well as an avid off-road motorcyclist, and enjoys trips to the desert with his close-knit family. Our next student is Melissa Gallegos. Melissa's a senior at Pacifica High School who loves to watch movies and has an eye for interior decorating. She and her family hosted a student from Korea in January and looks forward to visiting Pyongyang. In the fall, she will attend Cal State Fullerton and plans to major in TV, radio communications, and a minor in criminology. Vivian Ha is our next representative. This Bolsa Grande Matador loves water sports and represents her school in water polo and swimming. She also participates in the Wilderness Adventures Club, Senator Lou Correa's Young Senators' Club, and is president of the Interact Volunteer Club. She is a native Californian and has one older sister and speaks Vietnamese. Next is Valerie Nguyen. For the past three years, Valerie has held a student government position at Rancho Alameda High School. Now a senior, she maintains a high GPA and remains in the top 5% of her graduating class. The youngest of three siblings, her hobbies include driving, working out at the gym, meeting new people, and watching Korean soap operas. Boufam is the next representative. This La Quinta senior is part of the Toastmaster Club, Key Club, and Orange County Academic Decatholons, who speaks Vietnamese and Spanish, loves music, and plays tennis in his spare time. He'd like to attend USC as a business major and dreams of becoming an international businessman with his own company. Next is Mia Trung. Interested in becoming a doctor, Mia volunteers in the emergency room at Garden Grove Hospital. She would like to take medical aid through the International Committee of Red Cross. Mia is part of the Quiz Bowl academic team and hopes to attend New York University after she graduates next year. She has one sister and two brothers. And last but not least, is Jessica Vasquez. Jessica is a motivated Santiago High School senior planning to attend Cal Poly Pomona as a business administrative major. He loves writing and producing music. In addition to sports and clubs at school, he works part-time on the weekends. As a young entrepreneur, he aims to start a pool cleaning business and music label. It's very easy to see that this year's group of students is representative of the city's diversity and community spirit. They are motivated, civic-minded, outgoing scholars, and the city is proud to have such outstanding diplomats in Pyongyang, South Korea. At this time, the mayor and city council would like to present each of you with a city gift bag and wish you a safe and memorable trip to Korea, as well as continued success in your future academic endeavors.
If you'd please come forward, we'll hand the bags out up here. Okay, I don't have to tell you this, but I know you're going to have a great time there, and you're fine representatives of the city of Garden Grove, and we're very pleased that you're going on this journey. You'll really love it. Mr. Pack, go ahead.
Can I say something?
Well, that's what you said. Is there anything for us? Yes, you got 30 seconds.
Okay. 30 seconds. I thought I had five minutes.
You're done.
Mayor and councilmembers, thank you so much for recognizing the ambassadors for our community, our city. Cam and I will be the co-chaperones this year and will make sure that they represent the fine city of Garden Grove to our sister city, Pyongyang, Korea. And I just want to introduce our President of the Sister-City, Lin Lee, over there. Vice President Dave Perrigo. Former President Herb Lieberman. And our Treasurer, Cam. He's going to handle all the money for why we want. We'll be heading over to the Flower Pick Restaurant to taste Korean barbecue. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, now we'll go to oral communication for the council, the agency, and the sanitary district. Tiffany Nguyen-Liu.
Good evening, councilmembers of Garden Grove. I appreciate the time allotted for me to speak to you tonight. My name is Tiffany Nguyen-Liu, and I am a volunteer in Union of Vietnamese Student Associations, or UVSA. I am here to voice my personal opinions, and I do not speak on behalf of the organization. A situation occurred two council meetings ago that was a little bit troubling to me. As a former resident and family business owner in the city of Garden Grove, I spend a great deal of my time here. I have family and friends who live here, and I myself have future plans to move back soon. So I like to keep myself updated with what is happening in our community. When I watched a webcast for the council session on February 23, 2010, I noticed a speech made by a councilman that drew unfair criticism on UVSA with reasons that really lacked basis in fact. I am not here to attack anyone, but I am here to defend an organization that has been. And I am only addressing the philosophical problems that I have with this individual's speech. He said, and I quote, "When you look at their official magazine, you have in there, in the middle of it, an interview of a political candidate." He said that it offended him and that it really offends him, yet, for reasons unknown to the council and to the public, he failed to also mention that this person, as an alumnus of UVSA, is deeply rooted in UVSA's history of philanthropy and is a strong leader in the Orange County community. This individual is a role model to youths, to carry on these admirable qualities, to help build the future of our community. I joined UVSA when I was 17, and it's been nearly five years since then, and I've grown up so much as a person in UVSA. And as a soon-to-be alumnus of UVSA, I can only dream that my future accomplishments will be published in my organization alma mater's official publication. I am not a political person, and I don't understand the political motivations behind these kinds of things. In fact, it sometimes scares me. But I do know there's nothing wrong with celebrating debt and the volunteer service that UVSA members have given to the community. And I don't understand how someone can question my desire to serve my community, or the desires of many other young people like myself. And to see a leader in our community denigrate an honest nonprofit organization and, in effect, denigrating his constituents, that offends me. That really offends me. I feel that that speech went a little bit too far, and it was unfair. The councilman was voted to his seat by the citizens of Garden Grove to represent us, to uphold the reputation of our city, rather than to strategize for his political career. If he is not here to fully and honestly lead the city, as myself and other uninformed constituents trust him to, then call himself whatever title and apply himself as such, and we will judge him in that context. This kind of political stunt, pulled at the expense of our community, appalls me. We are in a time when trust in the government is weak, yet we still give our elected leaders the benefit of the doubt, and I don't want to let our trust and tax money stretch thin and as limited as they are now, to be hijacked and manipulated under the pretense that one is performing in the best interest of his constituents, and then turn around and serve some ulterior political motives. There are other items mentioned in Councilman Doe's speech that I personally would like to address, but in respect to the council's time, I will only focus on this particular overtly offensive rant made by Councilman Doe. I gladly hope that in the future, the senior councilmembers, who have been very supportive of us in the past 10 years, can help to inform new councilmembers on the history of UVSA's contributions to the city, and to consider taking steps to inform new councilmembers on the proper etiquette and research methods before presenting false or incomplete information to the public. Personally, I think that if the council does not go in that direction, you are exposing our community to much criticisms and problems. Because I may be just a volunteer, and I may be young, but I know what's right and what's wrong, and what happened to us two council sessions ago was very wrong. Thank you, and good evening.
Thank you. Lisa Ball.
Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, my name is Lisa Ball, and I work for the South Coast Air Quality Management District. I came here this evening to thank the city of Garden Grove for your willingness to air our state-of-the-air video on your cable station. We believe it's an important educational tool and are very grateful to cities like Garden Grove that are sharing it with your residents. I believe a copy was sent directly to your cable station, so I brought one with me here tonight, so you'd have one at City Hall. I also brought copies of our upcoming events. One is the Lawn Mower Exchange, and the other is a conference that we're having for high school students called the World We Can Change. We'd love to have Garden Grove high school students participate. Thanks so much.
Thank you very much. Craig White.
Good evening, councilpersons. I speak to you tonight offering you background information about my wife, Marilyn, and myself as homeowners wishing to continue our long- and short-term residential rental property in the city of Garden Grove. It's my understanding that this issue is still under evaluation and requiring additional time for staff to provide councilmembers more information in which to make their new provision on to amend the current municipal code. To offer you a little bit more accurate information on my wife and I as Garden Grove residents, I tell you freely for the record that the following, so that you may understand that we have no desire or consideration to be above the law at any time. My wife is originally from the city of Ottawa, Illinois, the daughter of parents, both of which have spent the last 20 years as educators in the city that they lived. She has one brother that is a general surgeon, chief of staff within the city, and a sister that is currently US Navy commander, assistant to the Admiral of the Atlantic Fleet in Washington, DC. Marilyn is an architect by profession, and a teacher and culinary writer, and gardening enthusiast by passion. In 1999 through 2001, she was awarded the opportunity to lead the architectural interiors designed for Universal Studios, of which we both relocated to live near the project in Sakurajima, Osaka, Japan for over two years. And the city and country that made us feel both welcome and very grateful for that opportunity. This was a responsibility that she took on well over one-half billion dollars to lead the interior program, that she was given the responsibility over for the USA and Japan laws, codes, and construction administration. She's currently writing a culinary book that addresses health foods for those that are suffering from food allergies like wheat, sugar, meat, and dairy products, and is basing this book on Vegan for Wellness Without Meat, Gluten, and Processed Sugar Products. My name is Craig White, and I was born in the city of Pendleton, Oregon, son of a 30-year educator, poet, novelist, living in Orange County. I'm an architect by profession, a healer by passion. Having designed and seen built over 1,000 residences, townhomes, and senior living facilities and retail businesses, I can assure the council that first and foremost is my attention to government, California Building and International Codes, municipal codes, mandates, and federal authority overall, with my special interest in regards to the American Disabilities Act, eliminating petroleum dependency products within construction, and eliminating or adding fully utilizing solar, wind, and Title 24 coefficient powered in safe building construction. My passion is helping others to eliminate them from discomfort, chronic illness, and cancer, from my experiences in reeducation since having three times almost died from food and medication allergies, in addition to food poisoning from grocery stores and restaurants thought to be safe foods for the public. Currently, I offer my time to teach the staff of doctors, nurses, and the Department of Oncology by their request at Citrus Valley Community Hospital, among others, for alternative ways for healing, like nutrition, megavitamin therapy, Reiki, Jouray, hypnotherapy, and music therapy, to offer patients in severe illness an opportunity that they can choose for themselves to help themselves in a natural way to become well again. And I feel very blessed that I've seen those recoveries, and the doctors say it must be a miracle. I'm here this evening, tonight again, to try and fight for my right to live and to be well while abiding by the United States Constitution bill rights that some of us take for granted. I thank the councilmembers and understand just how important it is to live in a democracy where we can express our truths and not be victims of prejudice, bigotry, and slandered hearsay by others, and look forward to speaking against this next council meeting. Look forward to your written comments by email, and I will leave this letter with the city clerk, and I appreciate your time. Jamontine.
Thank you. Is there someone named Renew? Wild, Wild West? Okay. Thank you. Okay, I'm sure you're just going to have one person speak, or if... Yes, thank you. Thank you. It makes it a lot easier.
Mayor and city councilmembers, thank you very much for allowing us this opportunity to make a presentation to you today. This year marks 11 years the local SGI members have had the honor of supporting the Community Service Department with the city's volunteer park cleaning program. Each month on a Saturday morning, several local SGI members gather for the park cleaning. For the past few months, several students from Santiago High School have joined in this effort. It's truly meaningful to work with other youth and be engaged in our community to create positive value. Every year, the SGI USA, in cooperation with the Garden Grove Community Service Department, hosts the Earth Day Celebration. This year will mark the sixth year... This year will mark the sixth year. We really appreciate Mayor Dalton and council members Dean Nguyen and Bruce Broadwater for their attendance and support in the past few, past years. Thank you very much. We encourage council members Steve Jones and Andrew Do. The theme for our event this year is "My Earth, My Victory: Blossom a New Era in Garden Grove." This year's event will be held on Saturday, April seventeenth, from twelve noon to three PM at Garden Grove Park. The monthly park cleaning is scheduled on the same day from ten AM to eleven AM. There will be a display of exhibits such as the Seas of Change exhibit, which contains sixteen panels that weave together stories of the environmental choices we make and the wide-scale impact on those choices. It introduces the Earth Charter as an educational tool for making the vision of a sustainable future accessible to all. The Victory Over Violence exhibit is designed to help young people identify and counteract the root causes of violence in their lives and communities.
We will also have an Earth Charter information booth with inspiring information to arouse a shared sense of responsibility for the well-being of the human family and the larger living world. Another new highlight this year will be the Rock the Era booth, which is a youth initiative to shape the future by making inroads in society and learning how to deal with the global issues for the sake of the future based on friendship. We have invited the True Neighborhood Teens Group of our very own city to join us in this effort. In addition, several students from both Santiago and Bolsa Grande High Schools will be participating in the cleaning, setup, and welcoming the community. Residents are invited to bring their own picnic, enjoy the festivities, and learn how to make a difference. We'd like to mention that many youths have taken various roles of responsibility to prepare for this event. We are determined to give back to our community and highlight the great diversity and warm friendship in Garden Grove. We thank you for this opportunity for make our presentation and we especially invite you to come join us at the Earth Day Celebration at the Garden Grove Park on Saturday, April seventeenth, from noon to three PM. Thank you. In your packet, you will find some materials on exhibits that will be displayed at the park, a DVD titled "A Shared Humanity," which can be watched in English and Spanish. We have also included a postcard reminder of this event. We appreciate your time. Thank you for this opportunity. Thank you and see you on April seventeenth.
Thank you very much. Vu Din.
Good evening, honorable mayor and councilmembers. My name is Vu Din. I am a former Garden Grove resident and I am here speaking on behalf of the Union of Vietnamese Student Associations. I am a current advisor and a former internal vice president and Thet chairperson in 2009. First off, I would like to thank the city of Garden Grove, the mayor and the council and all of the city's staff for their help, support, and cooperation in putting on yet another successful Thet festival celebration just last month. I'm here tonight to briefly follow up and clarify on the matter that was brought up by Councilmember Doe at last month's meeting. We had previously responded to the issue, but since the council member was not present and after hearing from our sources in the media, we felt that it was better to directly address it one more time. To clarify about our organization, I wanted to make it clear that we are indeed a nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization and we have been fully recognized and sanctioned by the Internal Revenue Service and the California Franchise Tax Board. This has, we have been a nonprofit organization ever since we first received the contract and that was one of our stipulations in receiving the contract in the first place. As such, as a nonprofit, we do not endorse any political candidates or engage in any activities relating to elections or campaigning. In regards to the participants of our festival itself, all of our vendors and sponsors of our festival must obtain all of the necessary documents and permits from the city prior to the event. This list is provided to the city as we get the permits in and the city is fully aware of, ahead of time, of anyone who participates in our festival. We allow all of other participants to display the materials inside the booth and the space that have been provided for them and they can only display their own materials and not other parties. In regards to our official publication, our magazine, that I guess caused a little bit of controversy, this publication has been published for over three decades and it features various articles that reflect the young Vietnamese-American community, the voices of the youth, and inspirational stories. In our past publications, we have featured outstanding community individuals such as Assemblyman Van Tran, Westminster Mayor Potem, Tri Tha, Rosemead Mayor John Tran, Professor Viet Din, along with others such as comedian Dat Phan, former Dallas Cowboys linebacker Dat Nguyen, and many others. And this year, to commemorate the thirty-fifth anniversary of the fall of Saigon, our editor and staff wanted to reflect on our own journey in serving the community and therefore decided to feature one of our former presidents and chairpersons who was instrumental in bringing the Thet Festival to Garden Grove and who was responsible for the idea of instituting into our contract of having fifty percent of our net proceeds from the festival being donated back to nonprofit organizations throughout Garden Grove and the community. And this is not the first time that we have featured him in our community, in our publication, and this has never been an issue in the past. In regards to the expenses of putting on the festival, according to the contract signed by the city and our organization, we are responsible for reimbursing the city with all expenses and we have been doing so for the past many years. For example, just to give out a few numbers, we reimburse the city over thirty thousand dollars for the city's support and also four thousand dollars for the loss of revenue for the park usage. All told, including permits and deposits, this totals over forty thousand dollars each and every year. All of these financial records are submitted to official review by a licensed certified public accountant chosen by the city and we have worked diligently with him and his office to ensure that all of the records are accurate and up to date. Our festival and organization is run entirely by volunteers, from myself as a former chairperson to all of our student volunteers and family, many of whom are here today. I believe that our festival teaches young people to be more community-minded and to understand the power of civic service. It is a poignant way to develop the future leaders of our community. And for the past ten years, this festival has brought many benefits to the city of Garden Grove through the promotion of cultural diversity, positive human relations among all communities, enriching the cultural experience of our youth and the greater community. In conclusion, I would like to thank once again the city council for your continued support and help throughout these past ten years. I would like to thank in particular councilmembers Bruce Broadwater, Dean Nguyen, Steve Jones, and Mayor Dalton for your support last year in helping us renew our contract with the city for another five years. And I would like to thank all of you for this opportunity for our organization and we would just like to, we look forward to celebrating our next year's thirtieth anniversary with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Rod Powell. You didn't think people would applaud when you came up here, huh, Rod?
That was kinda nice. I imagine I won't get the same clapping when I'm done, but either way, my name is Rod Powell and I am a resident of Garden Grove. And I don't have a lot to say. I missed coming down here. It was actually pleasurable to be able to present the grand jury report on the fireworks so that I know that probably you listened to most of, a lot of what I had to say. I think that you guys all are more familiar with the fireworks issue from what I read than if you, just from what you skimmed of that report, maybe you, Mayor Dalton, you may have read it more of it than the other council members I'm pretty sure had read. There's a downside to everything and I don't really know that there's that much good side to fireworks. You know, some people do enjoy them, I know that. I have friends that enjoy them. But I also have a lot of neighbors that just can't stand the Fourth of July, all the noise, all the mess, the worry. I am one of the persons that goes through all of that. The noise bothers me a lot, the worry about, you know, I don't have the shake shingle roof, but stuff flying into my swimming pool. This stuff does happen. And I just want you not to forget, I don't know why we have fireworks. You know, we had the perfect opportunity, the perfect time to get rid of fireworks when a house burned down two or three years ago, whatever that was, and everyone was hot against it. It was directly as a result of fireworks, be it illegal or not. Illegal fireworks, if you remember from the report, lead, are a factor. When you have legal fireworks, you're gonna have illegal fireworks. It goes hand in hand. So that was, in my opinion, a direct result of the fact that we have legal fireworks in Garden Grove. A house actually burned down. Thank God nobody was injured or worse. So I just want us not to forget that. I'm not gonna drop the issue of councilmember, I'm not even gonna address Councilmember Doe, I'll address the rest of you. Councilmember Doe does not reside in this city. I don't want that to be forgotten. On the Super Bowl Sunday, Super Bowl Sunday, just by chance, I was going to a bookstore that's at Chapman and Jamboree. It's called The Dollar Bookstore. I wasn't, I did watch the second half of the Super Bowl, but the first, I'm not into that anymore, even though I used to be a diehard sports fan. And so, and I stopped at a house that I have over at Seventeenth and Grant. So my route took me by Councilmember Doe's Santa Ana home. At least he will admit that he still owns that home. Well, I thought, okay, maybe Super Bowl Sunday. There's three Doe vehicles at that home. The garage door is open, the wife's car is in the garage, Councilmember Doe is standing by his black truck in between his silver truck. I don't know if you noticed that I was there. I think you did since you looked right at me and you know my car and you know me. And it's not against the law to spend a house at your second home, I guess, but I do live in the area, I live at Lamson and Brookhurst roughly, and I drive down all the time down Gilbert to another house at Brookhurst and Catella. It doesn't take me a second to scoot down Shannon and see what's going on there. His house is constantly, every weekend, there's a vehicle, one of the Doe family vehicles, backed into the same spot, like someone's there. Nobody's there. Nobody's there on the weekend. And during the week, nobody's there. And this is, and Councilmember Broadwater says, well, it was a funny thing, we had a mayor, somebody thought he could live out in Timbuktu. I don't remember specifically where Timbuktu was, but what's the difference? You know, Santa Ana, we call it Santa Ana, it's about, you know, fifty yards, a hundred, two-hundred yards from Tustin. You know, that's not Garden Grove. Almost said a bad thing. It upsets me. It really does that this is being allowed. I am gonna follow through on this, by the way. There's other, other ways of resolving something like this if the city staff won't do anything about it, if the rest of the council members are afraid or can't do anything about it. There are other entities such as the grand jury that is perhaps what I need to do. Thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you. Von Nguyen.
Hello? My name is Von. I'm a business owner who recently moved here to Garden Grove from Florida eight months ago. I really enjoy the city, especially the minor changes then to Main Street since I occasionally jog there every day once in a while. The reason why I'm here is I actually heard the ordeal with Councilmember Andrew Doe and UVSA and it kinda upset me when I heard about it because the organization I know holds the Thet Festival that I went to like a month ago. So just, I just wanted to say that I was kinda upset and that was it. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ann Nguyen.
Hi, I would also like to make responses to the statements made by Councilman Andrew Doe from a personal standpoint, not representing the organization. I've been an active volunteer in general since middle school. I always feel that the most, the best thing we can do with our time, to make of our time, is to volunteer for organizations that serve the community. When I was fifteen, I joined UVSA. I'm full Vietnamese, but I was born in America and I felt that UVSA was a means to learn about my culture, to be involved with those who are also Vietnamese-American, and that's why I got involved with UVSA. In high school, I was also involved in groups like Key Club, the Red Cross Group, and I was also part of National Honor Society. I only involved myself in groups that I thought best served the community. In college, my first big UVSA project that I involved myself in was the Leadership Camp, the VASA camp, where we spent a whole summer organizing this retreat, this outreach program for high school students in Southern California, all the way from Santa Barbara down to San Diego. We host a hundred high school students every year. This is our eighth year in the running and I've been involved with this camp for four years now. This is only, this is our second-largest project as far as funding goes after the Thet Festival. For students who can't afford to attend camp, we provide them with scholarships. Another project I've been involved with is the Miss Vietnam SoCal Scholarship Pageant. A lot of students out there, beautiful young women who are intelligent and involved in the community, apply for this pageant in hopes that they can gain a scholarship to help them pay with their tuitions. These are just a couple of the projects that I've been involved in since fifteen. I turned twenty-four this year. That means I've been a part of UVSA for nine years now. I believe in UVSA. UVSA does nothing but good for the community. When I heard these allegations made against UVSA, I felt that these statements were very hurtful. It almost feels like a personal attack towards me, towards my fellow volunteers who also have dedicated so many years of their youth and their lives to serve the community throughout UVSA. I don't think it's fair at all that these statements are being made without any research, without any backing. I think that if you have anything to say, you should address whatever individuals you have problems with personally and not making these public statements and making our organization look bad and also destroying the morale of our youth and our volunteers. Thank you.
Thank you. Nguyen Hau.
Good evening, mayor, councilmember, city manager, city lawyer, and also ODIAN. My name is Nguyen Hau, I live in I-13232 Pinto Road in Garden Grove. And today, again, I come here and say hi, everybody, and express my opinion. Actually, I am generally a longest activated Vietnamese community in this Orange County. I've been here since nineteen seventy-five. I've been observed to many, many events in the Vietnam community. And I've been to Thet Festival at the Fairview and Edinger in Santana, the first one, and then McGavin, and then Wachminter High School, and then Garden Grove Park. That's the same place we see to many different organizations. They held a Thet Festival on both, on Garden Grove or Park. And I heard about, every single year, they claim negative profit. Excuse me. Until the first year, the union students of Southern California take over. And I remember, the first year, they claimed about over two-hundred thousand profit and then everybody see it, every year, every year until today. The profit almost more than double. And I believe it, in my opinion, nobody can do better than... And I support and request the City, Garden Grove, continue, consider they are a good people, good organization to do the Thet Festival for Vietnamese community. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ben Lee.
My name is Ben Lee, and I live on 126729 Street here in Garden Grove. First of all, I am also a former executive member that served on the Union of Vietnamese Student Associations. I come here in front of the council today as a resident of Garden Grove, very disappointed at the false accusation that Councilmember Andrew Doe said publicly about the U V S A organization without any, you know, record checks or opening any dialogue with us first before publicly doing that on the airwaves or in front of the city council meeting. And so today, I request that if Council Doe could actually provide records or proof of your allegations against the organization. And also, I'm quite really disappointed from what was said from the last meeting, and that I request for more proof. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Pham.
Hello, Mayor, City Council. My name is Michael Pham. I am a third-year student at UCLA. I am a volunteer in the Union of Vietnamese Student Associations, and I am this year's current chairman of the Interclegiate Council. Now, U V S A is comprised of more than just volunteers. It comprises of students, future leaders of the Vietnamese-American community. Each campus has a Vietnamese Student Association, and there are 12 campuses within U V S A that represent the Vietnamese-American community. At my campus, we are a Vietnamese Student Union. And as a staff member of V S U, and also a staff member of U V S A, I would like to address the allegations that Councilman Doe made on U V S A. Now, I want to say that each V S A within the Union of Vietnamese Student Associations has similar mission statement, that being to preserve our ethnic identity, to empower student leaders, and to serve our Vietnamese-American community through cultural means, social means, educational means, and political means. To me, these students represent the future of Vietnamese-Americans, because we are an ode to our parents' struggles, to our parents' legacy. We are an ode to the modern-day exodus that was the Vietnam War. And for our communities, we represent the progress and the furthering of our Vietnamese-American community. And so, for myself, being a volunteer and a staff member of V S U for three years, it pains me greatly to know that my family, U V S A, is attacked. It's almost similar to knowing that my mother and my father worked so hard coming here after Vietnam and starting off with nothing, and providing for myself and my siblings, and then to have someone make an allegation against them. It deters me, and it hurts me, because I know what my parents do. And similar to that, I know what U V S A does, and it is here for the community. I want to address that. I want to speak on behalf of the students in that we are just so disappointed, because if this allegation is made against U V S A, it is made against, I believe, the Vietnamese-American community, the students, the youth that represent the future of our communities. If U V S A has these allegations labeled against it, and these allegations are consistently made, then it deters future Vietnamese-American students from wanting to be involved with U V S A. Other members of the community that don't know what U V S A does, when they hear these allegations, I can only imagine that they will even tell their students, sorry, their children, oh, don't join U V S A. They do this, they do all these illegal things. And that, to me, it hurts me greatly, because U V S A and all the Vietnamese Student Associations represent such a great home away from home for these students that go to San Diego, to Santa Barbara, to all parts of Southern California. And so, here I am to address the allegations that Councilman Doe made against U V S A. And it's hard for me, because growing up, my parents have always told me to respect my elders. And to you, Councilman Doe, you represent an important Vietnamese-American figure to me. But when I see that you've made these allegations against U V S A and the youth, that is something that disappoints me greatly. And I hope that Councilman and Councilman Doe can review your allegations and continue to support U V S A and all that we stand for, and the youth, and the future of the Vietnamese-American community. Thank you.
Thank you. An Tran.
Thank you, Councilman, for letting me speak here tonight. I am a volunteer and editor-in-chief of the Non-Song Magazine for the Union of Vietnamese Student Associations. And I came to speak today to personally clarify my reasons for having a political candidate in the magazine this year. I wanted to use the magazine as a way to show the community that the members of U V S A, as well as those in the community, have shed a positive light onto students, onto families, and onto ourselves. I decided to include one of the most influential U V S A members in the magazine, because I felt that his involvement in the community can only motivate and inspire the youth to become leaders as well. U V S A is all about building leaders within the community, within the business world, and within ourselves. We're all a family, and we only promote that, we only promote the positive side of things, and that we can make anything happen. And this year's theme was to make it happen, and I felt that within the magazine, within the Thet Festival, within just U V S A itself, we can make anything happen. And that's why I came to speak in front of you all today. That's why we all came tonight, to show that we're not as bad as you say we are, and that we just want to show the youth of today that, that we just want to make a difference, a positive difference in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, I'm closing oral communications. Mr. Doe, would you like to respond?
Yes, I do, Mayor. First of all, I would like to thank everyone who spoke tonight. And you spoke from the heart, and I respect that. For me, to sit here and hear these allegations against me hurts me. But, you know, that's, I have to face whatever consequence that my statements might have brought. But it's important to understand the chronology of what happened, and also what exactly that I am accused of saying, that I actually did say. Before I voiced my opinion publicly at this council meeting a month ago, I contacted U V S A through the city staff, and I asked to sit down and speak with representatives from your organization. Okay? And I waited for two weeks to hear from you. Nobody came to talk to me, to address the concerns that I had. Okay? Now, let's fast forward to the meeting where I spoke. I did not accuse anyone of anything, especially anything illegal. I raised a concern about the potential tax ramifications as to what you did. And if you remember, I was very specific and factual in what I said. It wasn't an opinion, a feeling that I had. I cited campaign signs on fences around the festival. I cited the article in your official publication, publicizing a candidate, a current candidate in the current race, with other candidates out there, including some from the Vietnamese-American community. And then you asked me for proof? Well, here is in one of the local, in our community newspapers. Here's a picture of Cessic Lo, which is like a little rickshaw, okay, which was a part of a cultural exhibit for your festival. And what does it say on there? Phu Nguyen for State Assembly. Okay? And then, when the time came for us, elected officials, to be invited onstage and with the other dignitaries. Phu Nguyen was invited up there. In what capacity? He wasn't the current president. Okay? If he's a candidate for that seat, there was another Vietnamese-American candidate, Dao Su Phap Kim Long. Why wasn't he included? In fact, he currently sits on the Orange County Board of Education. He was excluded? So, looking back, and I don't dispute Phu's contribution to the community, this has never been about Phu. In fact, if you go back and listen to my comments, I didn't even mention his name. Why? Because I said it then, and I'm going to repeat it now. I took the political aspect out of my comments. It's U V S A that chose to make this thing political. You could have come up here and shown me how I was wrong, how none of this happened, but you didn't. Instead, it's a personal attack, culminating in, I don't know the date of this letter, a three-page letter that went out to the Vietnamese-American community, going into all kinds of allegations, which I don't want to take the time to go over now. I will address them in writing in detail. But if there's one thing you need to know, and people from the community have heard from me for years, I'm a lawyer by training, and I'm a former prosecutor. When I talk, I have proof. I have never shut off my mouth without proof. And so if you're going to come here and accuse me of things, you better be darn right of what I said. Okay? And so, what I'm getting at is, Phu Nguyen has been a big contributor in the community. Why did you choose now, after all these years, when he is a candidate, to profile him in your publication? Are you telling me it's just a pure coincidence, together with the campaign signs on the fence, together with things like this? And this is only one picture. It wasn't even the picture I was thinking about. I saw another picture of a placard, of a yard sign planted in the middle of the festival. And so, all I'm asking you is, you're passionate about U V S A, and I am all behind U V S A. In fact, remember, I was one of the five votes to renew the contract. So my intention was never to pick a bone with anybody. All I did was to remind people who made the decisions to please try to be objective, stay above the fray, maintain your objectivity and impartiality. That's all I asked for. And so, with that, I would like to be able to just move past this. For the last month, you have, U V S A has chosen to make this thing more public, involving a lot more issues than I really, what I was talking about. And if, there was one young lady that said that she viewed the webcam or the webcast. If you saw the webcast, you must have seen all I said was about the tax ramifications. Where did I say anything about what anybody did wrong? All I was saying was, be careful. Don't go down this track, because it's going to hurt you, because most of all, it's going to violate your 501(c)(3), and then it's going to make us review your status once you lose your 501(c)(3). Thank you, Mayor, for the time to respond.
You're welcome. Okay, Mr. Fratell, written communications.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We have a request from Senator Lou Correa on behalf of the Acacia Adult Day Services for the use of the community center on Friday, May 12th, for the 2010 Seniors Making a Difference Recognition Breakfast Event.
Okay, Mr. Hall, would you like to come up and, you're representing Senator Correa?
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Dalton, members of the board, staff. I am representing Senator Lou Correa tonight as his chief of staff. And this is a request for the Senator's Office and Acacia Adult Day Center to use the Garden Grove Community Center here for a Senior Making a Difference Day. We did it last year at the City of Buena Park. This year, we want to do it on May 14th here in Garden Grove, and would appreciate your permission to do that.
Okay, well, I'll move approval. Does anyone have any questions before that, or?
Second.
Okay, have a motion in a second. Call for the vote.
Most received, five yes votes.
You can tell Lou that you get better vote results than he does.
Well, we look forward to seeing the five of you, excuse me, two, and then the three of you on the outside somewhere. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll take a five-minute break, and let's keep it to a five-minute break, because we still have quite a few items to go over tonight. And we've had oral communications, consent items. We have one consent item. I'd entertain a motion.
Move the item.
Second. Call for the vote.
Most received, five yes votes.
Okay. Public hearings, none. Items for consideration. Let's go to 6A, Mr. Fratell.
It's a purchase of property on 9th Street, and I'd like Greg Brown to give the staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Fratell. Chairman Broadwater, members of the agency, before you this evening, is a request to consider the acquisition of real property located at 12931 9th Street, which is owned by the Felling Trust. The property is located just north of Garden Grove Boulevard on the west side of 9th Street. Property is 7,190 square feet and is improved with a 1,145-square-foot single-family residence. Staff received a written offer from the trust to purchase the property prior to it being listed for sale on the open market. The sellers were aware that the agency has purchased several properties in the area over the years. In fact, this property is immediately adjacent to other agency-owned property. The agency has acquired five other properties on or near the corner of 9th and Garden Grove Boulevard. And if the property that we're talking about tonight were included, the total land area would total approximately 1.2 acres. The proposed purchase price of the property is $385,000, all-inclusive. The price falls within a range of fair market value, and there are no real estate commissions involved with this transaction. The property has three bedrooms and two bathrooms, is vacant, and appears ready to be rented. Redevelopment housing set aside funds will be used for the purchase of this property. Based on that, staff recommends that the agency approve the acquisition of 12931 9th Street, authorize the agency director to execute the agreement and make minor modifications as needed, and authorize the director, secretary, and finance officer to take other actions as outlined in the staff report. As always, staff is available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Any questions for staff? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Move the item.
Second. Call for the vote.
Most received, five yes votes.
Okay. Matters from agency members and director. Anybody have anything they want to say for the agency? Hearing none, we will adjourn to the next regular meeting, which will be held April 13th at 5:30 PM. And then we'll go to the sanitary district meeting and let the record show that all members are present. Okay, consent items.
Mr. President, you have two items under the consent calendar, and it's recommended that these be acted on simultaneously unless a separate discussion is requested by a member.
Have a motion in a second. Call for the vote.
Most received, five yes votes.
Okay, next.
You have the Garden Grove Public Financing Authority. And you have, if you need to call, the order of the financing authority.
Okay, let the record show that all members are present. And let's see, oral communications. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in this? Is there anyone here that would like to speak in this? Hearing none, I'll close oral communications. We'll go to consent items.
That's just approval of the minutes from March of 2006, if anybody can remember.
Just question if we weren't hearing.
Okay, now we'll reconvene the city council meeting. Consent items.
Mr. Mayor, it's recommended that items 6A through 6J be acted on simultaneously unless a separate discussion or action is requested by a council member.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion if no one wants to pull anything.
I'll move the balance.
Have a motion, a second, call for the vote.
Motion received five yes votes.
Okay, just a minute here, let's see.
9A.
Yeah, all the way, that's. Items for consideration, 9A.
Mr. Mayor, 9A is a proposed contract amendment with the city of Garden Grove and the California Public Employees Retirement System. And Mr. Clark is here to give a staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Fratell, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. The item before you is the second step in the three-step process to offer two years of service credit to incentivize long-term employees to retire early, helping the city achieve salary savings by holding many of the resulting positions vacant. The additional cost is amortized over a 20-year period and would be rolled into the city's PERS rates beginning two fiscal years following the plan's enactment. Out of a workforce of about 850 employees, the city has 171 eligible for this program, those who are age 50 and have five years of PERS service. It is likely, however, that electees will, on average, be older and have much more PERS service time than the minimum. Based on a survey of eligible employees, I think a figure of 40 early retirees is realistic. The proposed schedule would provide for a window period of May 15th through August 13th for eligible employees to retire. And this program is a key element of the city's coordinated effort to reduce costs in the face of continued sluggish sales tax revenue. That concludes my report, and I'm ready to answer any questions you may have, and also to read the title of the ordinance, um, at the mayor's direction.
Any questions, Mr. Broadwater?
Can we exclude Chet from this?
Um, I'm certainly, entertain any motion you wish to offer.
So then, you're saying that anybody with the first name Chet cannot retire?
If we exclude him.
Over 40 years of service credit?
I think he's trying to get 110%.
Well, I think he's worth it, but, uh, was that a motion I heard?
No, I'm joking. I'll, I'll move, we approve as is.
That's what I meant. Okay, have a motion, a second, call for the vote.
Let me read the title.
Yes.
An ordinance for introduction and first reading by title only entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove Adopting an Amendment to the Contract Between the City Council of the City of Garden Grove and the Board of Administration of the California Public Employees Retirement System to Provide Two Years Additional Service Credit." And I might also note that the recommended action includes the findings included in the staff report, which the council, uh, should approve as part of its motion to adopt on first reading.
Okay, have a motion, a second, call for the vote.
Motion received five yes votes.
Okay, 9B.
9B is consideration of members for the Vietnam War Museum Ad Hoc Exploratory Committee, and Kim Hoey will give a staff report on this item.
Thank you. At the city council meeting of January 26th, the council established an exploratory committee to provide a level of independent investigation in defining the development of a Vietnam War museum. The committee was to consist of two council members and three others who have the expertise to assist in defining the scope of development for that feasibility study. Since that time, staff has received inquiries from two people who are interested in serving on the committee. And staff has interviewed both of those candidates and is recommending that the city council appoint Roger Torero as the fifth member of the exploratory committee. Mr. Torero is a registered architect and licensed contractor. And in addition to his numerous professional organizations, he has also, um, sat at the Board of Governors for the Bowers Museum of Cultural Arts, um, and also as the chair of the Facilities Committee during its expansion and renovation. So, staff tonight is asking that you approve the appointment of Mr. Torero, Torero as the fifth member of the Ad Hoc Exploratory Committee.
Okay, any questions? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move the issue.
Second, call for the vote.
Motion received five yes votes.
Ordinance presented for second reading.
Mr. Mayor, item 10A is ordinance number 2770 for second reading, an ordinance of the city council of the City of Garden Grove approving code amendment number A153-10 to allow the use of artificial turf within the R2 Limited Multi-Family Residential, R3 Multi-Family Residential OP Office Professional, C1 Neighborhood Commercial, C2 Community Commercial, C3 Heavy Commercial, M1 Limited Industrial, MP Industrial Park, OS Open Space Zones.
Any questions? I'll entertain a motion. Motion, a second, call for the vote.
Motion received four yes votes, with council member Broadwater voting no.
Okay, next.
10B is ordinance number 2771 for second reading, an ordinance of the city council of the City of Garden Grove establishing the amount of money for paramedic services that must be raised by an ad valorem tax override and the setting of the tax rate of said override.
Any questions?
I'll move the issue.
Okay, have a motion?
Second.
In a second, call for the vote.
Sorry. I didn't get your vote. Your button must not be working. I, I, I still don't have your, your lights on.
I'm abstaining from this vote, not being here for the first, uh, reading.
Oh, okay.
And participated in the, uh, discussions.
Motion received three yes votes, with council member Nguyen voting no, and council member Do abstaining.
Okay, matters, Mr. Broadwater.
Well, I, I think, I just want to mention that the museum committee is moving right along with it. It's going, uh, we have, uh, chosen a company that we're going to go with on the, uh, uh, first report, so I, uh, will be bringing a number, I will be bringing a number of things back to you constantly on this and, uh, keep you aware of where we're going. But, uh, it really looks good, and, uh, we made a trip down to the, uh, Saddleback College the other day to take a look at their War Memorial, and it, it, they're gonna dedicate it later in this month, in April, I guess. And, uh, we're, we're getting a lot of people calling us and asking, and asking questions and wanting to involve themselves, so I think it's moving right along.
Thank you, Mr. Broadwater, Mr. Nguyen.
Um, yes. I, uh, incidentally ran into Mr. Roger Torero. Uh, and, um, I thought he was very motivated about, um, helping us out with the study on the museum. And he also showed a lot of knowledge in the past, being involved with other, um, activities, such as, um, the Bauer Museum. Uh, I think staff made a good recommendation, and, uh, I'm happy that Mr. Roger's on board with us. Um, I'm still into our Buy in Garden Grove, um, campaign. Uh, I just want to talk about one of the shops that I've seen in the city that has a lot of shoppers, and that's the 99-cent store. Uh, the one I go to is, uh, Westminster and Brookhurst. Uh, I can't believe the number of people that goes in there nowadays with the economy the way it is, how they offer everything from produce to dairy to just regular household items. For every item, there's, it's only a dollar. I'm not advertising, I'm just saying that it's, it's a, a good thing for people who are on a very low income to be able to go to somewhere and have only $25, be able to spend for the entire week for a family of four. That's amazing, uh, to have a business like that. And, um, also, that business is bringing in a lot of sales tax for the city. So, um, that, that's a good thing. Uh, please continue to buy in Garden Grove, especially if you're looking for a new car. We have a lot of car dealers in the city of Garden Grove. And as, particularly, um, I like the, um, Chevy dealership because, uh, I bought a car there before, a few years ago, and I'm very happy with the truck that I got, the Chevy truck. Also, um, I, I wanted to, um, um, maybe councilman Do is gonna talk about the trip from, uh, to DC. I was interested in that and see how that went. Um, and thank everybody, um, for just, uh, supporting the On Young group, uh, the staff for helping them, um, the students going to On Young and also receiving the students, um, from On Young. I hope that the students will have a good time and will learn a lot from the culture of our sister city. I did, when I went there in, uh, 2007. I enjoyed, uh, the culture and especially the people. So, hope that they have a good trip.
Thank you. Mr. Jones.
Just want to say, uh, congratulations to Mayor Dalton on the recent birth of his new grandson, May.
Max.
Max. I'm sorry.
Not my grandson, you must. Mr. Do.
Thank you. Yes, uh, uh, thank you for the introduction, uh, council member Nguyen. I missed last, uh, city council meeting because I was, uh, part of a delegation. We went to Washington, DC, and I took the opportunity, uh, to tag along with the county to, uh, to pitch for our city's own projects. And, uh, as you know, Congress is working through a lot of bills, especially, um, for the stimulus package that is being negotiated as we speak. And, uh, we had a lot of, uh, projects that, um, directly impact our district and our city. And we have already seen the fruit of that labor on some of the projects that our local legislators will be pushing on behalf of our county and our city. And I want to thank, uh, Mr. Fratell and his staff, especially Mr. Keith Jones, Director of Public Works, for putting together, um, a, uh, little dossier here that I brought with me to Washington, DC, listing the shovel-ready projects. Uh, we have spoken with, uh, representative of the White House, the senators, both of the senators, uh, from our state, as well as Congresswoman Loretta Sanchez's office, oh, actually, the Congresswoman herself. And, um, I just want to ask, uh, if, uh, Mr. Fratell and Mr. Jones, that, uh, the legislators, uh, asked that we can provide them for the projects that we submitted, a breakdown of the number of jobs that, uh, these projects will create, and, uh, the timetable in which we can complete these projects. As you know, uh, a lot of emphasis is, is being put on projects that are shovel-ready, that can be completed, uh, quickly, uh, within the next probably year, year and a half. And, uh, preferably, um, you know, shovel-ready and, and be ready to start within 30 to 90 days. So, um, whatever we can do, hopefully to get that information to our legislators and their offices, I think will be, um, of great help. We have already heard from, uh, Congresswoman, uh, Sanchez's office that, um, some of the major projects that we have pushed for got, at least she's going to be, you know, uh, advocating for full funding for us. Uh, and, um, also, um, this is an example, I think, of where sometimes we invest in the time to go there, and it, it pays dividends later. Uh, by that, I'm referring to the, um, the fight to continue to keep human rights as, uh, an issue that Congress and the Senate, uh, continue to pay attention to in Vietnam. And we are happy to report that two years after, um, Supervisor Nguyen and myself went to Congress, and where Supervisor Nguyen requested that the State Department to continue to keep track of the, the lack of progress of human rights, uh, in Vietnam, that if the violations continue, that we, as a nation, would put Vietnam back on the list of countries of particular concerns. And just last week, we heard and, and received copies of a letter that was co-signed by 10 senators across the US, making a joint request to the State Department, to Secretary Hillary Clinton, to put Vietnam back on the list of CPC. So, so we do know that this type of effort, when we go there and actually get to know our legislators and, and work with them, do, uh, bring back, you know, things that are of benefit, not just financially, but to us, on issues of importance to us and our community. So, thank you.
Thank you. You know, last week, I went to an event that was really kind of unique. This doesn't look very big here. It's a bowl of spaghetti. But Boca de Beppo in the city of Garden Grove, uh, was trying to beat and did beat, actually, the record of the largest, uh, bowl of spaghetti. And it was 13,780 pounds. And I'm sure that's gonna be certified very shortly, but, uh, and don't worry, that spaghetti wasn't thrown away. It was given to, uh, local people to feed their animals, horses, and, and, uh, the veterinary group took care of it. But 13,780 pounds. It was a lot of fun, and in talking to them, you know, I said, "How did you pick the restaurant here in Garden Grove?" And they said, "Because we love Garden Grove. It's, it's always treated us well. We have a great restaurant, and the people respond to it." And so, I'm glad it was here. And again, it's, it's, you know, one of the other, another first for the city of Garden Grove. I don't know who's gonna try and beat it next. I, I think it'll take some doing to do that, but it was really a fun event. Over the weekend, too, I, I was at an event, and we had four scouts, Boy Scouts that received their Eagle Scout Award. And that's really something. There are a lot of hard-working people that, they help their kids and have the kids on the right path, believe me. And I think it's wonderful. Also, an event that I went to, and I didn't realize this, but, the First Impressions Art Show that's put on by the Garden Grove Unified School District at Courtyard Center. And I go every year, and I hand out the ribbons and all that, and, you know, there's several hundred ribbons. But it's amazing to look at what these kids are able to do. And they have kids from kindergarten all the way through high school. And the artwork, I mean, it's just unbelievable. You look at this, and you, you believe how many people have real talent. But it's the 32nd year that the Unified School District has been doing this. That was great. I mean, it's, it's a lot of fun, but to see the talent again is just overwhelming. One other thing that happened to me, a few weeks ago, I got a call from a couple of frantic people in West Garden Grove, um, that the pushcart derby was in peril for not happening. And I said, "What's going on?" The wheels that are used are actually the wheels that are on the, the garbage, uh, cans that we have in our neighborhoods. Well, whoever they were dealing with told them this year they couldn't, they could not afford to, uh, supply them. So, I got on my thinking cap, and I made one phone call, and I called Dave Alt of Garden Grove Disposal. And I said, "Dave, here's what the problem is." And he said, "Don't worry, I'll take care of it." We have not talked since then, but it was taken care of because on Sunday, with the pushcart derby occurred. But, you know, there's so many times that it's quick to, to blame people. Uh, Dave Alt is really a great guy, and he does a lot, he's on the, on the, our, uh,
Foundation.
Community foundation, and he's really involved in our community. And this is another thing, I mean, there was over 100 Cub Scouts there, plus their parents and neighbors and friends, hundreds of people that would have been disappointed. And all was just, it was, it was kind of like the old days where you could do something and shake a hand, and it meant something. He just said, "I'll take care of it," and that was the end of it. So, there were a lot of happy kids, and it was a great event. And, uh, now that Mr. Jones made me think, gee, do I know what my grandson's name is? I'm not sure. Anyway, on, um, March 14th, my son and daughter welcomed into the world their first child, my 13th grandchild, Maxwell Brian Dalton, and he was eight pounds, nine ounces, and 20 and a half inches. And he's home doing well, and congratulations to Bob and Carly Dalton, and to Max, Max, or Maxwell. I think that's it, so we'll adjourn this meeting until the next one, which will be Tuesday, April 13th, 2010, at 5:30. Thank you.